We'll call this work session to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance, by the United States of America, and the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing on the agenda is Suffolk County Water Authority report. We had said, after we signed our agreement with Suffolk County to take over West Neck Water, we would wait till the season was over and Joe Pecorni would give us a, you know, a run through and how it went, how he sees things going, what the future is. So Joe, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, can everybody hear me?
Yep.
Yes. Okay, hi, everybody. Good to see you all again.
Nice to see you too, Joe.
I just, maybe what I'll do is just start off by sharing the, well, maybe I can't. Can I share?
Yeah, Christina?
Yep.
I'll just share with you the pumpage data over the past four years, and most importantly, including this year. This year was a rough year.
Could you make it a little bit bigger?
That's gonna be a challenge, but let me see.
Perfect, thanks.
Okay, so this year, you know, you probably all heard the announcements over the summer for conservation, and it was a big water use year for all the water supplies on Long Island, including the Suffolk County Water Authority. And it was big for West Neck also. So if you take a look, these are the numbers from 2019 through 22. Obviously, 22 is not done yet, but we are currently, as of the end of October, we pumped in the West Neck system about 5.2 million gallons of water. Last year was not a bad year also. We were 6 million gallons. So the way it looks right now, if we are close to, let's say, the average of what November and December typically are, we're gonna be close. I don't know that we're gonna get to the 6 million number. So I would estimate we're probably gonna be somewhere around the 5.8 million number, but it's still significantly, you know, higher than what I believe is the average over the past three years. You know, you can see back in 20 and 19, we were down in the 5.2 range. So like I said, it was a challenging year in the water industry. So the good news is that the revenues will be a little larger, so that will help in that respect. The bad news is that, you know, we use more water and everybody got used to using more water, and hopefully that's not a trend, so to speak. It doesn't happen every year. You know, we find that, you know, water usage, we will have a big year every three to five years or so. So that's probably our big year for a little while, but we'll see. I don't know whether this is, you know, part of a climate change trend where we're getting hotter summers, but July and August were pretty rough months. You can see that, well, I had it up there, but they were almost a million gallons both of those months.
Joe, hi, Joe. Hi, it's BJ. Sorry to interrupt. Also, I think confounding your data a little bit is, we had that new restaurant come on board. I think they opened early August, if my memory serves, but they probably were gearing up throughout the, at least the last half of July. So I think that really had to have an impact, no?
I don't think they had that much of an impact. I think their opening, I think their opening was probably not until maybe the end of August and September, from what I recall. But I know they did have some-
I know, I had my anniversary there, August 13th.
Okay, I didn't realize it was open that early. Okay.
So I don't know. It would be interesting, but it would be good to know that it's not that big an impact, actually.
Well, we'll take a look. I mean, we're gonna see what their consumption is when we do the next read. The next read will be done end of November. So the bills, the next round of bills will go out in December. But yes, so we'll take a look at that. We'll see what kind of uses they have. But I mean, you know, I think that hotel is really the big, obviously, that's the big user on the system.
Yes.
Some of these Airbnbs also. So that is really where we stand with that. Now, towards the end of the season, we had a problem with the number five well. And the number five well, I'm not gonna get too technical, but what was happening was it was breaking suction, which means that if you know how a well operates, when you pump water out of the well, the level in the well drops, right? And there's a pump hanging down inside the well. And if it's all designed properly and the well continues to give up water as you're pumping the water out of the ground, the pump stays submerged. Even though the water level drops, the pump stays in the water, underwater, so to speak. And what happens is if the well stops producing water or doesn't produce water the way it was originally intended, the water level drops even more. And then what happens is the pump starts to suck in air instead of water. And that's what we noticed towards the end of August with the number five well. So we kept on running it to get through the rest of the season. We throttled it a little bit, which means we stopped, we closed the valve on the discharge of the pump so it didn't draw as much water out of the well. And that allowed the water level to rise a little bit as it pumped to address the air problem. But then in October, we had our well maintenance contractor go out and pull the pump and inspect to see what was going on. And it was a good opportunity for us. You know, as you know, we haven't done this at all to any of the wells in the West Neck system. We just were really going by visuals and records that we had. So it was a good opportunity to pull the pump out. We put a camera down the well. We inspected it. It was remarkably clean. I mean, typically when we take a pump out of a well that's been in operation for over 10 years, it has some kind of iron buildup on it or some kind of scale. The pump was absolutely clean and the interior of the well was absolutely clean. But the capacity of the well, and again, that's its ability to give up water, was definitely low. And from the records that we looked at, it was low to begin with. So it's not what you, the well is not screened in what you would call a very permeable section of the aquifer. In other words, it doesn't give up a lot of water. So what we did was, when that goes on, we kind of, we do what we call a reconditioning where we kind of agitate the gravel that's around the screen and we try to liberate some of the fines that are in there that prevent the water from coming through the screen. And we really didn't see very much of a change after we did that. So after looking at it, after having one of my hydrogeologists out there for a couple of weeks, we came to the conclusion that really these wells are not screened in particularly good material. And the whole size of the well, in other words, the diameter of the well for the amount of water that's coming out of it is probably too small. So, you know, we were planning on putting in new wells there or a new well. And this is gonna kind of inform our decision-making process when it comes to building the new well. And I think the decision-making process is gonna go like this. It needs to be bigger. That's what, it needs to be a larger diameter casing and screen so that the well is capable of giving up more water. Not that we're gonna pump more water out of it, although we are, but just in proportion to what we pump and the size of it, we need to have a little bit more heft in the design of the screen and the design of the well. So we actually met with the Department of Environmental Conservation to let them know what we were experiencing and to let them know that we were going to be asking for permission to drill a replacement well of some sort over there. So right now, we're looking at where that well location is gonna be and whether we need to do a test boring first because, again, we have limited data on what the aquifer looks like down below, the area where the wells are. And sometimes if we do a test boring and we drill down far, we get an idea of what the stratigraphy, which is a geologic term for what the rocks and gravel and sand look like down below, so that we can screen the well in the optimal location. So we're working on that now. And like I said, that's the, the objective is to get a new well in there. Right now, the well is back. We throttled it a little bit so the well will be able to continue to run. And what we also did was we added, we added another five feet of column to the pump so that the pump is further submerged in the water so that if this does occur again, the water level going down won't cause it to pump air.
Joe, I know in the master plan, we were putting in a new well. Is this, is this over and above what we're gonna do or is it gonna kill two birds with one stone?
Well, I think we're gonna kill two birds with one stone. But look, I mean, there are, you got those two wells there. We now kind of, we've kind of lost some of the confidence we have in wells five and six, the ones that are in the golf course. So look, you know, in the master plan, the town is on the hook for one well and that's what we're gonna, we're sticking to that. But we may wind up replacing well number six too at some point. Because the way I understand it now and talking to Bob Holtsmacher, because I did speak with him about that, your engineer, and those wells were actually installed by the Health Department 20 or so years ago. They're monitor well. They were intended to be monitor wells of some sort at that time. So again, I'm not really crazy about the construction of the wells. The wells that we drill, you know, they're more expensive, but they are higher quality construction. They're fully grouted, which means that nothing on the surface can get down into the well casing. Those wells are not fully grouted from what we can tell. So we'll do well to replace them. And we'll make them as big as we can. We're not gonna make them, you know, crazy large, but we're gonna make them so that they're gonna get us some extra capacity out of the system in that location. So that brings up another issue, and I sent an email this morning about this. Amber, you were on that and Joe Fenora was on it, but the, we got the results of the grant applications that went in for the next round of grants. And as you may recall, the West Neck Water System had a grant as part of, you know, the many grants that were submitted by water systems all over the state. And unfortunately, the town was not successful and the grant was not on the list of approved grants. Now, it was a little weird and it seems like the EFC does things differently, you know, with all the most recent grants that they've been coming up with. Typically, there's a list of all the grants that were applied for and a point scoring system showing where you stood in relation to the grants that did get approved. And they didn't do it that, this way this time. All they did was publish a spreadsheet that had a list of all the successful grants and that was it. There was no scoring criteria. There was no, there was no relative, you know, understanding of which one scored high or which one scored low. So I have a call into the Health Department to find out about that. But as you may recall, we were holding up on doing some of this work, mainly the distribution system, because we were hopeful that we were gonna get the grant, that if we got the grant, the contract that we used to do the work was gonna have to be a special EFC compliant contract. So at this point, if my conversation with the Health Department is that, no, you didn't get the grant. There's no chance of you getting a grant. There's nothing new on the horizon. I would then, you know, my suggestion would be for us to go forward using our annual contractor for the pipeline work. And then, you know, go forward with planning on getting started on that. Because I would like to get started on that. I'd like to get started and finished it, obviously. But I don't know if you guys have any thoughts about that or?
The thought that I had, Joe, I'm Jimmy Coligan. I'm in charge of the Grants Committee. And all the grants that we apply for, one of the important features is the scoring of each grant. Because obviously, when you get a score and the score, let's say, make up a number, say, 70 and above were awarded the grants, and you scored at a 67, 68, and you know where you fell short in terms of getting those extra two or three points that you needed, it helped you in terms of resubmitting the grant in the future because you knew how to beef up the grant opportunity, you know, when you resubmitted that grant. It's unfortunate that they, they didn't do that in this situation because you would love to know that you were close. If you weren't close, that obviously, you know, that else tells you, sends a different message to you that don't even bother wasting your time again because you are so far away from, you know, the acceptable level of being approved, you know, that we would turn our energy and attention elsewhere. So that's, that's a little disturbing. So hopefully, you might be able to get, you know, through your channels, be able to get some results on what the criteria was and how that scoring went.
Jim, that's exactly, that's exactly what I was saying. I'd say, you said it better than I did. But that's exactly why the scoring is helpful, because you get to know where you stood relative to everybody else. And you also get an idea of what you need to do maybe the next time you submit a grant.
The other question I had, Joe, was what we always talked about here that, you know, we know where the wells are located on golf course and they're strategically located from a lower part of the golf course. And then, of course, right behind you, is it possible to think that there can be some type of efforts made between the wells and the property to the east, east of New York Avenue, where we might be losing water, where we could, where we could capture more water instead of it being going into Chase Creek or, you know, or elsewhere? Is there, is there any thought about that, you know, engineering wise of, you know, do we get 50% of the water? Do we capture 90% of the water? Or do we miss a lot of it? And is there a way that, you know, because that to me is important.
Jim, it's funny you say that because when I was talking to the hydrogeologist last week about this, you know, one of my hydrogeologists is suggesting that we consider putting the new well back over on the other side of the road by the pump station. And then we were looking at aerials of the area there and we brought up that parcel that you were talking about on the other side of, yeah, and kind of adjacent to the pond that's over there, but it's also town property. And I thought that that was an interesting spot. So we actually went out there and looked at the property. It's a little low lying.
Yes.
And the concern that the hydrogeologists have right now is that it may be taking road runoff.
Yes, correct.
And, right, and so there may be concerns about that. You know, with road runoff, very often comes salt and then chloride contamination. But it's not-
I was just thinking, I was just thinking, you know, as the water comes down the hill, you know, the recharge, is there, could be, there an effort on the golf course side of it to construct something where we would be able to capture more of the water and redirect that towards the wells as opposed to having it go under New York Avenue into the, you know, back into the-
Oh, I see what you're saying. Oh, actually, trying to keep it on the golf course side, you mean?
Yes, yes.
It's an interesting thought. I mean, I don't know how much runs off from the golf course side of things over to that low spot.
Okay.
But I mean, I mean, the golf course is obviously all permeable material, right? That's all grass and soil and whatnot. So that's permeating pretty well. I don't know. We'd have to take a look at that and see. But I, like I said, I don't wanna, I don't wanna dismiss it at this point. I asked the guys to take a look at it. Like I said, they were out there. I believe they walked the property last week before the holiday. But I need to get back together with them to decide where we want to put the next well. I mean, the easy way to do it right now is to add a replacement well right on the golf course side.
Yep.
You know, we know what we have over there, although we have a challenge because the aquifer looks to be a little hard to give up water, you know, it's a little impermeable. So we need to take a look at it. And I, you know, the interest in the pump station side of things also is, is another possibility. Because there is some land over there. There is some land that is part of the water district and the town property. So I believe there's a good spot there to put another well. The only problem that I have with that is that well number three is over there right now. And well number three, the water quality from well number three is the less of all the three wells that we operate there. That well has some, it's either magnesium or manganese, but either way, it impacts the water quality. Okay. So, but there could be a reason for that also. It could be where that well is screened. So one of my hydrogeologists suggests that we do a test boring over there to see what's going on over there. And we may do that.
Hey, Joe, can we go back to the grants for a minute?
Yeah.
I mean, I'm sure you applied for a lot of grants across the whole district.
Unfortunately, we got four grants. You know, in that round, the Water Authority received four other grants, Jerry.
How many do you know, is it more than you receive, normal or less?
Well, less than we normally receive. I mean, the past three rounds of grants have really been focused on emerging contaminants. So those perfluorinated compounds, one for dioxane. And we've been applying for treatment systems per well. So the last two grants, we got like 15 treatment systems on each round of grants. This particular one, I think it was just three. So they definitely backed off. There wasn't as much money available in this round of grants as there have been in previous ones. But we got three for advanced oxidation systems to treat one for dioxane. And we got one grant to bring drinking water to some areas that are contaminated with PFCs. That ranks very high, I know that, with the Health Department. You know, they wanna get people off of private wells that are contaminated.
And Joey, if we wanted to pursue this on our end a little bit, who would we contact? The Assemblyman and the State Senator or is it county or would we?
Well, you know, I think the first stop is to talk to the Health Department up in Albany. Brock Rogers is the person that we deal with up there to maybe get more of a sense. You know, thinking about it, Jerry, the people that live down on the Montclair Peninsula that have contaminated wells where they have chloride contamination, that might be an opportunity for grants because, again, it's contamination of private wells and a Health Department wants to help people that are, you know, either drinking contaminated water or have to do extraordinary things to get good, clean water. So that's one thing. But I think Brock Rogers would be the first person to start with.
Okay. Yeah, so it sounds like on a scoring sheet, those emergent contaminants must really score pretty high.
Yep, I think they scored high, Jim.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But like I said, I've gotta call into Brock. Haven't heard back from him yet, but when I do, I will let you know how that goes. I know Jennifer might have a relation, you're a grant person, Jennifer might have a relation. If she wants to reach out to him, I would urge you to do that also.
Okay.
All right.
Well, that's not good news, but it's a reality. No, listen, it's not your, you're doing here. What else you got for us?
Well, everything else is pretty much men's and men's. We're replacing the meter, the main station meter in the pump station that failed about six to eight months ago. We're still waiting on the materials, these mag meters, which is what we are gonna put in there. It's a magnetic flow meter. The lead times of them are long. I understand we're now about two weeks away from getting it. So hopefully before the end of the year, we'll have that master meter in. You know, as we're, as you may know, we're just using the individual meters on each well right now and summing them up to come up with the total flow. But we like to have a master meter in there to tell us what the whole station is putting out. And then again, the other thing is the next bills. So the next bills with the next meter reading is gonna be, I think, on the 25th or so, probably right after Thanksgiving, right before or right after Thanksgiving. And then those bills will go out right around the first of the month in December.
Joe, before I ask Lisa, if the West Neck Water Board has any concerns and any bumps in the road that you see that, you know, need to be addressed or?
No, the bumps in the road are the bumps in the road, the leaks, you know. I, it's amazing how many leaks we have responded to in the short time we've been involved with your water system. So I, you know, replacing the distribution system, again, you know it, Jerry, I've said it several times, it is the priority because, you know, as much as we've run leak detection over it and we think we have all the leaks identified, given the number of leaks that we've seen so far, I wouldn't be surprised if there was some other leak somewhere that we haven't detected. But we just had one about, I don't know, four, five days ago, right in front of Lisa's house, actually. But, you know, that, the distribution system is really just, it's gotta go.
Yeah.
It really does.
Any questions from the town board?
No.
Okay, Lisa?
Um, yeah, I just wanted to make one comment that, and I think that, I think that looking back over the aging summary to see how many people increased their usage would give us a good indication if the water use was from customers or from leaks. Because my suspicions are that that high volume of water pumped is water that's going right back into the ground.
You think so?
Yeah, I do.
I definitely, I was looking at that too, Lisa. I think, like certainly January, February, there was a couple of high ones that I would think that might be leaks.
Yeah.
Right, then even the summer, you know, when Joe was talking about those high numbers. So yeah, the leaks are-
You know, I can, I can do a rough analysis, Lisa. It's always kind of hard to do it on a quarter by quarter basis. It's, it's more effective if you do it over a longer period of time. But I can take a look at the consumption, you know, from the metering, from the meter reads that we have and compare that to water pumped to get like a lost, unaccounted for water estimate. I can, we can definitely do that. I can have, I have an auditor person here and that's what she does. So it might be helpful to do that to get it on.
That was my next question was, my next question was, what type of leak mitigation does the Authority usually undertake? When do they do it?
So we, we have two people that their sole responsibilities are leak detection. And they are constantly out there on the road every day checking. And we, there's like an electronic device, so like a listening device that gets mounted on the piping to detect leaks. And we do that and we probably run our entire system over the period, you know, we have 6,000 miles of maintenance. We probably run the whole system over a period of two or three years. It takes that long to get through the whole system. We did it out by you when we first got involved with the system. And we didn't, I forget whether we found a leak or two or whether we didn't find any. I mean, I could run leak detection over it again to see if anything new has popped up. It's not a big deal. It's probably, it's a one day job to do it.
We usually, we usually get leaks when the seasons change, but I don't, there hasn't been a dramatic change in the weather.
Right.
Um, one question I have with regards to the grant. If we are ineligible this year for a grant and you start the infrastructure upgrade and we apply, can we apply next year?
I think you can always apply for a grant. The question always becomes then, how did you do the work? And this is where this risk analysis, you know, we have to consider. That's why Jim's comments about getting the numbers would be helpful. If we do the contract, if we put the contract out as a special contract using the EFC language, you were gonna pay more for it. All right, the work is gonna cost more because the EFC has requirements that the contractors have to meet that make the job more expensive. And if I use my annual contract where the contractor bids, it's like, you know, he bids like on $10 million a year and this is just one other project in there, the price is lower. So, you know, the question is, what do you want to do? Do you want the lower price now? And this is why we kind of held off because, you know, we thought that we would get the grant. And so we said, well, if we're gonna get the grant, we don't wanna jeopardize it by getting started in the fall by doing the pipe work using my annual contract because that's not gonna qualify for the grant submission. You know, they won't accept my annual contract for it because it doesn't have the language that they want.
Uh, but my question, Joe, is next year, if we apply for the grant and say we're successful, that grant can then be applied to only work that hasn't been done, correct?
Well, the provisions, some of the grants will allow you to go back, look back. But that would mean that the work that you did has to conform to their standards. In other words, they're not gonna pay you for, you know, work that was done using my annual contractor. And we go through this all the time with our, our work also. You know, you want the money, but you gotta do it their way. So that's kind of the challenge.
Now, one of the disturbing things, Joe, that you said at the beginning was the, the fact that the state has limited the amount of money when municipalities have been hearing exactly the opposite, that this is the perfect time. And we realize that with water, contaminants are obviously a high priority issue. They have to be because people's health are at stake. But on the same token, the overall volume of money that should be supporting water initiatives outside of contaminants where you are fixing infrastructure, maintaining infrastructure, is just, you know, is, is, and I don't wanna say just as important, but it is important.
Sure.
Because it is a valuable resource that needs to be- Because it is a valuable resource that needs to be addressed. So I think somehow or rather the way we bring feel and other politicians in is to, it's to make this known that, you know, you, we're dealing with a water system that's, you know, for lack of a better term, kind of archaic. It's, it's, it's old, it's outdated. It needs to be replaced. And if we can figure out that we're losing, you know, you know, we talked about the term of the five point eight million gallons. And we find out that, you know, fifteen, twenty percent of that is being lost through, you know, poor, poor infrastructure. That equates to, you know, a million gallons of water that is going by the wayside. So that's, to me, that's kind of important because every drop is important.
You know, one thing I didn't bring up is that the, as you may know, the, in the last, in the election last week, there was an environmental bond act that was passed.
Yeah, yes.
And it went up, it was passed pretty, by pretty high margins from what I, I saw. There may be some money in that bond act for water infrastructure. So that might be worth looking at because it's, you know, it's, it's going to be available soon. I don't know when the next round of grants will be available from the EFC. It might not be for another year. But possibly if there is money available in that bond, it might be worth waiting for that before we pull the trigger.
Okay.
Would you be looking into that, Joe?
I, I'm going to be looking into that because obviously we, we're looking into it for all of our customers. So sure.
I'll also this week be in contact with Jen, Jennifer, to look into that as well.
Absolutely. Jennifer, this is what she does. So please don't, don't rely on me. I'm, I'm, I only know what I've been involved with here at the Water Authority, but I get the feeling that she does a lot more of this than I do.
Did you say that was the ESC?
ESC.
Well, yeah, the existing WEA grants that we applied for, that was the EFC. I don't know how this money is going to be distributed from the Environmental Bond Act, but I, I believe that it'll probably go through the EFC, which, you know, the EFC becomes kind of like a clearinghouse for distributing this money, regardless of where it comes from.
All right. Thanks, Joe.
Okay.
Mr. Supervisor, I have a, yeah, off topic question. And I may have misheard you, but did you reference that Airbnbs have a higher water usage?
Well, yeah, sure. They have more bathrooms and showers and they use more water. Sure.
Okay.
Oh, wait, you know what? Let me, let me back off. I, maybe I used the wrong term. I said Airbnb. I meant bed and breakfasts. You know, you guys have some big beds and, beds and breakfasts out there. And that's what I'm talking about. An Airbnb, I, I couldn't tell you. You know, if someone's renting their house out on the weekends.
Right.
I don't know if that's any different than somebody that goes out there on the weekend and uses their own house.
There's three BnBs on that, on the water side.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, there, there are several beds and breakfasts out there.
Anything else, Lisa?
No, I mean, we are supposed to have a meeting with Joe on Friday. So.
Yeah.
We're going to go over a lot of this with the board, which seems a little redundant, but we do have other questions as well.
That's fine. That's fine, Lisa.
Okay. Thank you, Joe. Joe, thanks very much. Oh, hey, Joe, I got a question for you before you go. Sorry. We, we have had some inquiries in town hall. What would be the process of people who are interested in hooking up?
Well, I think the big issue right now, Jerry, is just whether we have capacity. You know, and I'm, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with hooking up many more people, except for people that were in the pipeline already. We hooked up six Barringer. That was already going forward before we took over the system. So they've been hooked up. But I, I really would be hesitant to take on more customers until we have more capacity in the system.
Okay, that's honest.
Honestly, that's, that's the way I feel at this point.
Now, that's a good, good response, same response, Joe.
Okay. All right, Joe, thanks very much.
All right. Thanks. Good seeing you all. Take care.
Take care, Joe. Happy holidays.
Okay, next on the list, Anne Marie Stedey is here. Talk about the annual notice on the tax bills and Anna, Anne Marie.
So I'm asking for authorization so I can insert a flyer in the tax bill mally. And the flyer will give taxpayers information pertaining to how to sign up for email notifications. That will give, the email will send out tax due dates at various times throughout the year.
So Anne Marie, why are you commenting to us? Are you an elected official and you have your guidelines? Is it budget wise or is it?
Uh, no, apparently there's a law here that tells me municipal home rule law that gives the town board the authority to adopt an open law to include inserts in the tax bill that include public information that does not constitute propaganda or advertising.
Yeah, so they're pretty strict with what you could put in into a mail or a tax bill. But I'm not convinced yet that we need a separate and distinct local law because if you look at RPTL, Real Property Tax Law, Section nine twenty-two, one A six. You're allowed to include in the statement the time, matter and place is fixed for receiving payments of taxes. So we may be able to shoehorn it into that and then it just could be included in the statement. If not, if we're going to have a separate and distinct insert, there is another provision of tax law that allows you to include certain things. You would have to pass a unanimous resolution, but it's really strictly to water rates, sewer rentals, permit fees and other fees, not really what we're talking about here. So if we can't shoehorn it into nine twenty-two, then we would have to do a local law.
So the reality is it's mid-November. When do they go out?
Uh, so the tax bills will get mailed the second week of December.
So we have to act on this.
But the thing is, the tax bill format is, it doesn't, it doesn't allow room for me to add page there.
No, we want it separate.
I mean, the thought was just to sort of like put in a little, you know, little flyer. It basically gives the information on how to, how to find it on the webpage.
What I'm getting at, Stephen, is if we're going to do this, we have to do it right away.
Yeah.
Anne Marie, it's time to.
Yeah, so we'd have to probably do a spec.
And if we don't need it, we don't need it. It was just, you know, I wasn't sure, so I thought it was better to ask.
Oh, without a doubt. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, because truth be told, if you put an insert that's unauthorized, it's a misdemeanor. So.
I saw that.
So, yeah, so I'll get right back to you as to which route we'll take. But I just want to, again, to go through the rigmarole of a local law for something like this seems silly. If we can do it, just include it in the statement. And even if it's a separate and distinct insert, if it's under the umbrella of the statement, I think we might be all right. So I'll get back to you as soon as possible.
And pretty much it just pertains to the tax due date.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just a reminder. It's only a misdemeanor, remember. It's a felony. It's only a misdemeanor.
You probably only do ten days.
Have you seen the tail of it?
It's not hard time.
Yeah.
There's no pillows.
You could bring a Kindle.
You know, you know a guy there that can maybe make the accommodations better for you.
He's the last one that's letting out.
Anne Marie, thank you very much. So you guys will be in touch.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. Got number three on the list, budget hearing discussion. Do we need to reopen the budget meeting or is this separate and distinct or?
We close.
Okay, right. We need to talk about.
We do.
We close.
I don't know.
How do we do this meeting?
Well, it's more just about budget. It's, it's not necessarily, it's more about mooring.
We put, we put the budget, the anticipated revenue was already in there.
Yeah, so we have a proposed local law that you also want to talk about that has to do with the term going from three year to one year term. So that you can talk about and the fees are in connection with it. And the fees are just passed by resolutions. There's no local law amendment that has to be done. It's just whatever you guys decide. So, yeah, you don't have to really worry about the budget.
Okay. So it's more mooring terms and fees than?
Any changes that we're making need to be in an open.
Right, yeah, because we had a couple, a couple of things to go.
So how do we do that if we close the year?
You may have to reopen it if you're changing it.
So we have to advertise it? We can't wait enough time?
Well, we're going to have to have a special, yeah, you're going to have to, we'll have to figure out logistically if you make changes. So have your discussion.
We may changes, right?
We're proposing.
It's changes in the budget. It's not, the bottom line is still the bottom line. We're not, you know what? We're not adding money or taking money away. We're just moving it.
From one line to another one?
No.
Are we doing any adding?
Well, why don't you guys talk about and then we'll figure out logistically what.
Okay, but again, we have a, we have a schedule that we have to.
Yeah, but you have until the twentieth to adapt it.
Okay.
So you can talk about it.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. All right. So let's get on to the mooring discussion.
Actually, why don't we go through the other things first? Just because they're, they're just fast and easy. If you have the budget open, I don't know if you want to like bring it up yourself, sir.
Let you share it.
Yeah, share it. It's out of the base here. In the A Fund, one of the things that we have missed out. So we can go to line eleven hundred, the shellfish. And so I'm looking at the one that was presented and made available for the public hearing. I'm going to let Shelby, she's working on an alternate copy to make the actual changes so he can monitor the effects of this. So shellfish seeding. That was the twelve thousand that we have. We are going to be using WQI funds. So we had an expenditure of twelve thousand, so we can take that to zero. So that's going to go to the CPF tab. Line eighty-eight oh five four hundred, which is other grants.
But it's not just moving it, it's taking it out of appropriations.
Yeah, it won't be coming out of taxpayer dollars. It will be coming out of the WQI fund. So that was one thing. Nutrition. Going back to the A Fund. We wanted to make some changes there as we're trying to move people around. We have a departure and we are talking to a new hire and we're going to possibly move rejigger things a little bit. And that's something that I wasn't a hundred percent sure. We've got, let me just get there. So we had the senior program supervisor, the entire salary was in the nutrition program. Historically, that had been, I think up until twenty twenty-two, that had been split between nutrition and senior services. So we wanted to put that back fifty fifty to senior services and fifty percent here. But then there was also, and that was a piece I didn't have in my notes until it was a nutrition program clerk. So I had a note to add twenty thousand to a new line, which would be the A six seven seven two point one four four for program person. So that would be twenty thousand. So the sixty would go to thirty-five. Add twenty for the program clerk. And then down in the senior services, A six seven seven. We would have senior program services and then add thirty-five minutes in here. So that was a budget increase. Ten thousand for the senior program supervisor and twenty thousand for the nutrition program clerk.
Right.
So that's.
And again, are we adding money or are we finding it to move?
Well, we found twenty, twelve thousand in shellfishing. We're now adding basically thirty thousand in salaries in the senior program.
So we got to find eighteen thousand.
But let me keep going.
Okay.
Because the next to talked about was the fact that we've put in a grant under capital planning, ADA compliance, that it says police right here, but actually that was twenty twenty-two. For twenty twenty-three, we're looking at fifty thousand to do ADA planning and design work for justice court. We have submitted, which we approved, you know, to submit a grant to the community block development grant, that fifty thousand. So instead of this coming from appropriations, we can now change that to being grant funded. So instead of having two hundred and eighty-five thousand monies that flow over to the A Fund, it would be two hundred and thirty-five thousand. So that would be a fifty thousand pickup. So those numbers net down to savings of thirty-two thousand.
After we.
So it's my, you know, we're saving twelve on shellfish, spending thirty on nutrition slash seniors and then saving fifty thousand here. So that's what I had for things that, you know, different, I think there's a couple of small tweaks that we like to have some money from. She realized we didn't have a lot of jobs right in highway, so that's been fixed in the highway budgets, but then that affected the contingency. So there's been a little bit back and forth there. So she's, she's covered that, but it's like just transfers here and there. So.
So what you guys did was you, you met the needs we needed and we also took money out.
I get, okay. Yes, yes.
Good, thank you very much.
Yes, so that's sort of the summary of like the different pieces I've gotten from different discussions on what's, you know, interviews and things like that. So.
Okay. Good work. Good, thank you.
That's where we are. So right now, I guess.
We're at four point five.
Four point five percent.
Four point five, okay.
So we were at four point nine percent. So now we can move on to the mooring discussion and I'm going to turn that over to.
Okay. So the mooring discussion, again, anybody that's been living in a cave that doesn't know what's going on is the town board has been trying to take the policy of using user fees where applicable as opposed to just putting in the general tax base. And the feeling was that waterways related issues should come out of the waterways fund. By code, we're allowed to do that. It says, you know, what, what the monies can be used for and we're not, you know, we're not stretching that at all. My original proposal was to go two hundred and fifty dollars for commercial per year and residential, we were going to do by the foot. But after talking about it, we came up with some different ideas. BJ had put together, you know, what it would be at hundred and fifty a year, two hundred, two fifty a year, five hundred a year. So I would say BJ, you want to walk us through your suggestions?
Yeah, I, 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 before I do that, I also want to just sort of just talk about a little bit user fee. That is one way to look at it or a portion of how to look at it. But I also want to say that I also look at it as a townwide asset, the bottom. And commercial moorings especially are using a townwide asset that, and, and I think that the rest of the town should sort of get a little something for that, a fair something, but a little something. So that's another sort of leg to the stool of what supports, in my mind, a mooring fee. Because just for an example, the, the public gives up the right, almost in perpetuity, to have a mooring at the end of Hudson. That, that's taken and, and, you know, by a commercial enterprise. They give up the right to recreate, recreate or recreate in that area to, to paddleboard or, well, I guess you could paddleboard through a mooring field, waterski or, you know, shellfish. And there's a certain sacrifice, if you will, on the public's part for commercials. So I just user fee, yes, but also this idea of a return for the public on an asset that is theirs. So.
Just, just to expand on, you know, what you said to us. The public gives up the right to shellfishing areas. They give up clear, clear vistas. They give up recreational space. And they give up their right to a mooring enduring harbor or at the end of Hudson Avenue.
Yeah. So, you know, and, and it's, it's, it's unlike residential. So, you know, and it's unlike residential moorings, which change hands. They're given up, they're, you know, taken by other people. This is somewhat different and so very different. So I think that there should be a different pay scale. So that's just justifying why they're different, why commercial more than residential. Commercial is also making a profit. So again, you know, another reason to justify it aside from the user fee notion. Now, I also kind of just want to point out that we did listen to WMAC. I don't think, Jerry, your first bite at this apple was 250. I thought we had a spreadsheet originally that's that had proposals that let, you know, that sort of different proposals. In fact, that's what the WMAC was emailed originally, originally, originally to talk about. And those proposals went all the way up to 500. There wasn't a one number that we had. It was here's the operational costs, here are the fees that we're thinking about. And then that was a great discussion over more than one meeting and then also in our public hearing for the budget and I think also at work sessions, we've heard from WMAC members separately and in emails. So I just kind of also want to make sure that it's clear we've listened. I think it's clear that we've made adjustments or in my mind are the proposals that we're sort of going to sort out today are very much in keeping with that. We're not going to cover all the operational fees with this. We're not going to cover all the monies that the conservative financial people among us would like to put into the waterways fund for future big expenditures. So in that sense, Jerry, we're, you know, it's not a user fee completely, you know, is what I'm saying. We were listening is what. And so anything left on the table that we're discussing, discussing, I think takes into that fact that we're not looking for this to be a revenue grab, which is what one of my emailers called it. I don't think, you know, to cover everything, as Lyndon Johnson said, like grandma's night shirt when in the Gulf of Tonka. It's not, it's not to cover everything. So, yeah, that's, I think, all I wanted to say on that. And so now it's a matter of just, I guess, deciding what we think is fair. Oh, the other thing is I wanted to also say with the WMAC discussion, as you started out this conversation, Jerry, we're not doing it by the boat length for residential. Again, something else that I think we were all sort of sold on as a good and fair way of doing and, but we listened and to what we were advised.
Yeah. On that note, on that note, BJ, Southhold, and I have it right in front of me, vessels up, up to 18 feet with 150 a year, 19 feet, $200, 20 to 27 feet, $400 per year, 28 feet, and up to 35 feet was $600 per year. That was the fees that they had in Southhold. And I think the town board decided that we were not going to go in that direction at this time, you know, that that might be something that we would consider down the road, but not at this time. The other thing, I think we agreed upon was the annual renewal, that we were getting away from a three-year, two-year and going to an annual renewal. And I think if you read Stevens' logic in his justification, which is his legislative intent, he spells out exactly why that that is important. And I think, and I think, do you have that, Stephen, right in front of you?
Yes.
Could you just read that for the audience? Because I think that's an important statement.
Sure. The town board finds that a three-year term, three-year renewal term for mooring permits is too long and creates compliance issues and increases administrative costs. A reduction to a one-year term will allow for more efficient administration of the mooring code by ensuring consistency in the filing, renewal, and termination dates and further provide an opportunity for annual review to ensure the permittee is in full compliance with mooring regulations.
Okay. And the other thing I was throwing out here is whatever we decide to charge for a residential commercial mooring today, you know, two things I have to say about that. Number one is I would like to establish these fees for a three-year period. And that would be for 2023, 2024, and 2025. I would propose that in the summer, July of 2025, two to three months prior to the budget season, we reconvene a group of people, WMAC, Bay Constable, liaison to that committee, a few other people, to sit down and review what has, what's transpired over the first two and a half years, what's worked, what hasn't worked, but it should be subject to some type of review, okay, including the fees themselves. And the other thing I would say is that, you know, I just think that I'm not looking at trying to create a figure here in my own mind that tries to lower the budget by two tenths of a point or three tenths of a point or whatever. I think what was, what's driving me now is based on the conversation of last week by the three gentlemen that were here present, what is fair right now? What do we consider to be a fair assessment for the next three years for commercial moorings and for residential moorings? And I think that's the important piece that we need to look at.
In terms of, let me just, I don't know that we can set fees for three years. I think that takes away the power of successive of town boards from them. It would be a nice goal to have stated, three years. I would like to see whatever we do today be five to 10 years. I have to be honest with you. I don't think that this is something that should change on any kind of frequent basis. I think, you know, that this should be something that people can count on after they digest it, a change.
BJ, the only reason I said that, by the way, is that because of the waterways fund. I, you know, when Amber was quoting us where we're going to be in 2023, 24, 25, 26, that's something that I think needs to be looked at prior to 10 years. I don't want to see the waterways fund go down to nothing. I want to see how we monitor that.
You can look at it as often as you want, but I'm just, the way you said set cheese, I just wanted to sort of make that point.
Okay.
I also wanted to balance what I said before about what the general township gives, gives up in terms of, you know, commercial mooring fields. The operators of the commercial mooring fields provide a lot to the town. They're good stewards of those environmental assets. They employ people, et cetera. I mean, I don't think I need to go over it. It's there, but I don't want to lose that, lose sight of that, that that's, there's a balance there. Yeah, and so that being, I just wanted to be clear about that, that we recognize that, that there's a positive as well as maybe a negative.
Okay, so just to refresh everybody, my original proposed budget that I presented to the town board was based on $250 a year, anticipated revenue on commercial moorings and by the foot revenue on the residential moorings. The total came to about $250,000. We decided to go get away from the square footage, I mean, the foot by, length by foot, and we can, so BJ's suggestion is we go residential, we have, well, we have the boat storage on the beach is $150 for the biggest boats and we felt that was a fair number for residents to pay per year. And then residential, again, I had proposed as the start of the conversation in the budget, $250 for commercial. BJ suggested we go to $300 per year for commercial. Now I want to hear from everybody. What do you want?
First, I just want to know, someone who has two years left on their permit, they're going to get to run that out, because I know that that's come a couple of times.
My recommendation is we start, if we raise the fee and go to a one-year, we do it across the board. We don't phase it in. And if you have two years left on your, you know, what you paid, you get a credit.
$100.
You get a bill, you know, your bill will be $100 less, so it wouldn't even be a credit, you know.
One year less.
I disagree with that for two reasons. One, I liken it to going to DMV and I have two years on my car registration and now you're going to tell me I have to now go back to DMV and I'll get a credit for one year, but now I'm getting a raise. So I disagree on that. I also disagree from the operational aspect of trying to implement that of someone goes on to online mooring and now they're going to have to renew and then the system has to be programmed such so that the system knows exactly how much is left that that person's going to get a credit for. So I think implementation is a nightmare.
I think number two, we can handle in-house. I think we can give online moorings the information they need to do that. I think it goes more to the other one. And I'll counter your DMV analogy to if Cockles Harbor is paying this year for all their moorings and Jax is paying, just as an example, is paying the third year, he paid three times as much as Jax for his moorings for two years. So I don't think that's fair.
I don't, well, I guess we'd have to ask the commercial people whether or not all of their moorings renew in, you know, in phases or all at once. But also, as I told my daughters when they were growing up, life is just not fair. So like, that's just the way the chips fall. I feel like the DMV example and logistically from the operations side, we will not get this implemented until late spring if we have to go through and try and.
There's people that are not renewed until 2026, so that's an issue as well.
Right. I think logistically, yeah, it's going to be a lot of work, but we can do it. The question to the board is, do we want to go all in or over three years?
I'm for three years.
I'm for three years. Face it in.
Yeah, I agree. I think it's going to be too much of a mess if we try to credit people who've already applied and then have them reapply. And in their mind, they have their mooring for three years or they still have it for two years. So I think it's going to create a bit of a nightmare to try to do it that way. I say just rip off the Band-Aid and just make all the changes and they start from this point forward.
Wait a minute, what do you say?
And then you phase it in. So like, so what Amber was saying.
It sounded like you were ripping off the Band-Aid.
Yeah, but when you rip off the Band-Aid, you're confused.
People who have to renew this year, yeah, they're going to have to do it every year. And the people who still have three years, okay, fine, they got lucky, but they just happened to get lucky. So, yeah, pretty much what Amber said.
All right, Jim?
We're at a vote. I'm at a vote, so. I was really mad at what you said. I was actually looking to try to do it all at once if feasible. Again, it's got to be feasible. If it's not feasible, then it's not feasible, then you have to phase it in. You know, I'm more, I'm more concerned in the argument here about what that number was going to be.
Yes, that's the next discussion.
You know, that's something that's, something that I want is fair as we're phasing this in. And that's why I like a review, you know, based on the experience that we've had with this for two and a half years of particularly in sight of, you know, how that fund is being maintained, the waterways fund and, you know, and meeting our needs. And that's.
Well, let me just chime in here to start this, which, what the level should be at. Jerry, you're at 250, I'm at 300, and I'm comfortable with 275. I am comfortable with that. I also want that to be a reflection, again, that we were, we got a lot of input over the last few weeks and I want it, I want people to know that we heard and we listened. So, so to me, that 275 number would reflect that, our listening. I prefer the 300, but, because I don't think, I'm going to use a word that John Neenam does not like, I do not think it's onerous, but the 300, but I'm, but I'm, but I'm comfortable with the 275 as a midway point.
You spotted?
Do they currently name right now a commercial mooring? I want to know.
It was 225.
No, 200.
200 a year currently?
50 a year.
67. For three years, I think.
I'm sorry?
I thought it was 225.
No, I didn't do, but they told me it was 200.
For three years, what's 66 something?
So 66, 66, or 67, yeah, okay. But this is going to annuals?
Yes.
BJ, you had done this one spreadsheet that had expected revenues at the different levels. Did you take into account everybody going at once or does this reflect like?
This reflects the three years, the one that I sent you over the weekend?
Yeah, you resented, yes.
Yeah, that, that reflects, I'm sorry, I didn't label the columns. A column, A is 2022, B is 2023, I'm sorry, A is 2023, B 24, C 25 for the years. Okay, and so that 275 number would generate revenues in next year of 118,000. It would finalize at, in the third year phase in at 156, let's round up, 157,000.
Okay, so that takes into account like what I had thought, like 58% are going to renew in 2023 and then another 20 some odd percent and another 20.
BJ, I'm really not sure how you got, how the math works. If you take an expected revenues at 300 per year, the first year is 81, 300, you divide it by 300, I don't think it comes out to an even number.
271.
All right, then use, then use the second one as the example, because I know when I was doing it, a lot of them didn't come out as even, even numbers.
That was the 58%. So BJ looks.
No, it's still, 43,000 divided by 300, you tell you how many.
Yeah, if you look at it south.
And it didn't work.
Yeah, she's got, so 271 times 300 for commercials, so 271 are going to renew in 2023. And then if you go down here, you've got 502 at 150 times 58%. So, yeah, it's not perfect because we're just.
Yeah. But it does take into account.
Okay, percentage, I got you.
So if you go from $66.67 per year based on $200 for three years, and you went to $200 per year, you've in fact increased it by threefold, 300%.
Well, Jim, that was.
No, I'm just, I'm just saying, that's mathematically, you've increased it by 300%. I wanted to get away from the discussion of the, what we're going to produce revenue-wise to fairness and now.
I want to talk about fairness. I want to talk about fairness too, Jim. I think absolute numbers matter, that 275 or 300 a year, it's, when you talk about a percent increase, you have to look at what you're coming from. And that number is, is very, very low. How about, it's been a great deal for a decade or whenever the last time that got raised. And, and, you know, it's not, and if you think about what it is, it's, it's two, it's three nights on the hook for the smallest boat for the minimal charge on a transient basis. Three nights in a season that's maybe 75, 90 nights long, depending on, you know, what you look, and there's a vacancy rate and I get, I've done the numbers, very comfortable that the absolute number is not crazy.
I need some input from.
I know. Well, what are you proposing? Are you proposing 250 too or?
I'm proposing anything. I mean, you, I mean, you know, I propose something, BJ proposes something, but we don't have to stick with those numbers. I can give you my new proposal, but I'd rather hear from everybody first.
Yeah, I was a little concerned about the comment last week about because of the price of gas, because of the increase in fees and things like that, of getting people into, into mooring areas all over the place and not going to marinas that can service. You know, I do think we have an obligation to support some of these local businesses. I think I've, you know, I've tried to listen to the three people and be fair. Again, they were looking originally for a 25% increase, going to $200, you know, annually, increasing it by 300%. That's a far cry from what they were looking for.
What is 25% Jim in real numbers and in today's dollars? That's, that's, that's a, it's such a small number. On $66?
That's why, but again, that's why I was proposing that two and a half years down the road, we would take another look at these, everything about the way the, you know, we register with, stick with an annual registration, whether the fees are fair, you'd have a better indication, not waiting another 10 years. I think this has to be monitored very carefully, but I'm not looking to either have this solve the budget number. And I get where you're coming from, but I think.
Neither am I, neither am I. That's not a good statement, because I'm not looking for that either.
No, I, I'm not saying you are. You're, you're looking, and you've justified it in your own mind in terms of what, what, what should be fair. You know, but I'm just looking at it from, you know, what I heard last week, and I, I just, I think a 300% increase when you go from, again, a ridiculous number of $67 a year to $200 for, you know, $200 for three years to $200 for one year is a major increase in, in that fee. And I, you know, I don't know. I just think that, to me, is more of a acceptable number in my mind than, than going beyond that at this time. But again, I'm open to whatever anybody else has to say.
Amber?
Yeah, I'm just looking. I'm, I like the idea of a compromise and coming down a little bit on the 300. And we also discussed not, some of the future expenditures, which I can put into the budget for the waterways funds, like depressing beach moorings over the next few years, that those should not be financed by, by waterways monies.
I agree.
So we pull those out. So over the next few years, there's 100,000 that won't get spent. So that makes me more comfortable with the balance that remains in there. So we could, and also, this year, we're not pulling the entire 171,000 of budgeted expenditures out. We're only pulling 140,000 out, or whatever we choose the revenues to be.
Okay, I'm gonna make a proposal. We go with 150 a year for the residential moorings, the same as we do for the boat storage. And we go to 200 a year for the commercial, which is $50 a year more than the residential. So it is a business and it should pay more. And I would also emphasize that we somehow worded that there's a three-year, after three years, we evaluate and see if it's working, just as Jim suggested.
I would say make it 250 then, not 200.
If we do 200, if we do 200, we'll have anticipated revenue of 120,750. Plus the boat storage will get us up to almost 140,000. If we do it at 250, we have 75. At 250, we'd have 145,000. So it's $25,000 more if we go there.
Correct. It's just about, a little under $25,000 more.
In 2023, you'll only have 97,800.
I did, I based it on the whole thing. I didn't break it down to per year.
You know, it's right there for you on that spreadsheet, you know, the three years, so it's 97,000.
Yeah, I'm having trouble reconciling this. Because you've got this, this, you're doing 285 at 200, and then 425 at 150.
That's totals, that's not percentage of each year. That's over the three years.
Okay, so that doesn't give me a good number. I mean, like.
Well, it's not gonna give you a number for this year's budget.
Okay, so I want to take BJ's.
Well, you could take 51% of that.
58%.
Well, no, it's not. My commercial number is based on actual expirations.
Right, yeah, that's what I want to, uh, yeah, because you've got overall numbers and BJ's broken it down.
Right, year by year.
Your, your proposal into one of hers.
Which she, she sort of did as the last one.
Yes, except that's, so the commercial would be the 271, 200, so that's 54,200. Oh, and that was 150, okay.
Right, and the residential stayed at 150 for all.
Okay.
Four options, I think, yeah.
I was reading that wrong. But that number's 43, okay.
We heading this way or this way?
Down.
Great.
So that would be 97,874, BJ's numbers.
Over to three years, it's the other way.
Just one other thing, too. I, I, I think relative to the residential, 200 is low. I have to say that.
Yeah, I was, I was thinking that.
Residential.
I was thinking, yeah.
Wait, wait, residential and commercial?
No, residential at 150, and then commercial only at $50 higher a year. I think that's a little bit too low.
Yeah, I think that's kind of a slap in the face to the residents, the, the, the normal voter who's not making money on their, on their mooring. 250 is the minimum, but I really would like to see 275. And I will be quiet now, I promise. I'm muting myself, that's it.
I'm with you on that, BJ.
Yeah, I, yes.
150 and 250?
275.
2. You're just a liar.
Sorry, John.
Yeah, Meg?
I would say 250 or 275.
Say 200 or 2, whatever, split, you know, from 150 to 75, 225.
I, I said 200. Jim says two and a quarter. Beck says 250 to 275. Amber and BJ say 275. What do we want to do?
So give me a number and I'm gonna do an average.
200.
I'm, I'm proposing, I'm sticking with my 200, though.
225.
You're sticking with 200?
Yes, I am.
Okay, and Meg, what do you?
Do 250.
Then I'm going with 300. Put 300 for me in there. If you're gonna go with 200, Jim, I think 300 is fair.
What'd you say, Meg?
250.
Amber?
I said 275.
I say 200.
So it's 245 would be the average of those three.
250 anyway?
They're close.
250.
We're doing true compromise here.
My original proposal.
Okay.
Okay, all right, 250.
250, all right. So then we need to know what the budget implication on that is going to be. So that means we had budgeted revenues of 14974.
It's now 111,424.
So that is a decrease in revenues of 29,550. So we'll have to increase that whole of 30,000.
Well, there's your 32,000 plus that you came up with before. It's a negative, it's a, it's a wash.
Yeah, so we'll just be at the.
It's a wash. You keep. Space at 4.9, yeah. But it is a wash.
59,791. And then what we do, we're working on the capital plan, the long-range, I'll key your capital plan. So we will have to take into account that we are not going to be including as many of these marine assets in the, in that, so.
And I think that, that's an important piece of this, because I think that's, that addresses the concerns of some of the, some of the people, especially people on WMAC, that felt strongly that some of those expenditures, you know, need not come from, from that account. So I, I think that's a, you know, we heard that and we, we agree in part.
And, yeah, and just to be fair, we had 171,000 designated expenditures, but in actuality, we're pulling, we only used 111,000, it's coming out of water waste money to pay.
But we still want to build up the water waste fund.
Right, but that, yeah, that's, that's not decreasing it this year, keeping it stat, keeping it stat.
Okay.
So what do we have?
Got 250.
What do you want?
Yeah, I'm trying to, yeah, like with it.
I was gonna say, your face is like, this is not quite right. Something here is not mathing correctly.
All right, based on what you had before, you'd take you right back to 4.9.
It should be pretty close, but.
Okay, so that extra piece is coming out of regular fund balance and not water waste fund balance.
Correct.
Okay.
Yes.
Then yes, it would.
Yes.
Let me also add, I didn't, there was another piece of very important, I'm sorry, you ready? There's another piece of important, important information or advice that came from WMAC and other people actually in this discussion, which is why moorings, on only moorings. So I started gathering data from Amber, Dottie's Amber, on other fees that we charge that are waterways-related. And it's not in time for this budget, but it's, so it's a, it's a more involved project that we'll work on. Hopefully, you know, through the winter and get, get something changed so that it could impact next year's budget. I just wanted to put that in there because it was another big, big point that people made, sort of over and over again during this whole discussion topic. And I want to be, I want them to know that we're, we're gonna look into it.
Okay, good. All right, thanks, BJ. Okay, next on the list. Schedule annual.
Wait, so next steps, is we have to adopt this budget. So when are we gonna do that?
Shelby's gonna give us the corrected copy.
Yes.
What do you see it down?
Yes, but we have to do it this week, I think by Friday. Dottie said it the latest.
18th is the latest, right?
Okay.
Yeah, they have to till the 20th, but it's on a Sunday, so it'd be Friday.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, so Friday.
Okay, so we have to set a special meeting to adopt the budget.
Okay.
And I will not be here, I have a task.
Okay.
I'm back.
You're back, okay.
Oh, you're back?
My next question.
Perfect, okay.
All right.
11 o'clock Friday?
Board of Ethics.
Sounds good.
Board of Ethics, hold it, wait a minute. What's the calendar for Friday? 10 o'clock Friday morning?
Five.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
10 o'clock, 10 a.m. Friday, okay?
Got it.
15.
That's the 18th.
The 18th.
Okay, now we have to, we have to schedule the annual meeting. The annual meeting is usually the last, almost the last day of the year, it's usually.
It's technically scheduled right now for, for what is scheduled for Wednesday, December 28th, at 1:00 p.m.
Okay, yeah.
And the question was, can we change it so that it's not in the week between Christmas and New Year's? What do we actually do at the end?
A bills, any permits need to be brought up before?
Kind of just close out?
It looks like your first meeting in the next year is the organization meeting, but you don't do.
Yeah, right, right, yeah.
So you gotta figure your first meeting of the year would be first regular meeting.
Right, there we have it.
In the third.
So Dottie, what are you comfortable with? How early can we go with the annual meeting?
Oh, we've done it on the 2nd.
Of December?
2nd.
Oh, Jan.
Of January.
Oh, January.
Done before January 20th.
Oh, okay.
That's the.
So instead of pushing it earlier to like the 23rd or 22nd, we could push it later to.
The 3rd.
They recommend the 1st.
What's the first town board meeting? Yeah.
Tuesday, January 3rd.
But that'll be the organizational meeting.
That would be the organizational meeting.
Should we, can we do it after the organizational meeting?
To do the annual meeting?
Yes, you can.
It's already done, right?
Yes.
No, that's what I'm.
That's what he's asking. Can we do it after the year's done, or should we do it earlier in December? So right now, we sort of have it scheduled for the 28th. And they're wondering if we can move it to this week, one of these days, instead of this week, so that we have this week off.
How many need to do it? Everybody traveling?
It's Christmas week, it's Christmas, it's Christmas to New Year's, you know?
We've done it that way forever. I mean, I don't see that, that terrible a thing to do, but you guys wanna change it?
I mean, is everybody traveling and can't attend?
I don't travel.
I'll be here. Wait, um, wait, are we taking? Sorry.
That's what we're figuring out.
Why we have to change it first?
Um, because I was gonna be with one of my daughters.
I'd like to travel.
Out of town, so I can't zoom in and be here for a forum.
Okay, so then you and BJ will be out of town, so then we don't.
So that, so then we have to change it. So if you're gonna reach to change it, okay.
Okay, because there's not enough room to make a more, yeah.
If one of us gets sick, then there's.
Right.
Right, yeah.
So the decision is that we have it right before?
But I mean, I'm not going for that long. So it's just I won't be around the 20th, I'll be fine.
We want to do it before the organizational meeting.
Right, okay.
So.
23rd?
What's the week before look like?
The summer 23rd is a Friday. Summer 22nd is a Thursday.
Yeah, my plan was to be gone the 22nd, back the 27th.
How about that Tuesday?
Okay, talk to me then.
Yes.
I'm trying to get attention.
Yeah, I, I just want to read the actual provision of Loth's Town Law, Section 62. Section 1, "The town board of every town shall meet on or before the 20th day of January each year for the purpose of making the annual accounting by town officers and employees as required by Section 123 of this chapter. The requirement for the annual accounting shall not apply to a town having a town comptroller, nor to a town which prior to the 20th day of January shall have engaged the services of a certified public accountant, a public accountant to make an annual audit to be completed within 60 days after the close of the town's fiscal year."
So a special meeting to Tuesday before Christmas?
I was gonna say, we do have an audit, but it's never complete, it's never completed within 60 days.
Of the close of the town's fiscal year?
Correct. So that would put it at February 28th or March 2nd, something like that.
Okay, so if you, if you don't meet that, then you have to have this annual meeting.
Yeah, because I think the AUD usually goes on extension.
Let's make a. Yeah, so there's two exceptions. In other words, there's two exceptions to this annual meeting. If you have a town comptroller, which we don't have, or if you have this audit done within 60 days of the close of the fiscal year, which is saying we don't do.
It doesn't.
So we have to have this meeting and it just.
Okay.
So why don't we do it to Tuesday before Christmas, when we have a work session scheduled and make it a special meeting?
The 20th.
Right.
Can we? Thank you.
That worked, Jim, you here?
Okay.
You here for that?
Yeah.
Thank you, yeah, thank.
That's fine.
So Amber's the only one traveling?
And BJ, and BJ.
And, okay.
But I'll be, I'll be here still.
For this?
Yeah, I know.
Everybody will be here for the 20th.
I'm leaving on the 20th, I'm on the 22nd.
Perfect.
Annual meeting to the 20th.
Which one is that, island or?
If you start a due resolution.
You go on island?
Right, no, no, that's just CIB.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah. I can't believe it's all right.
Okay, we got that one trained up? Okay, we'll do a board member report. Meg?
Comp plan, public work session on Friday, public workshop Friday, 7, 7 o'clock, 6 o'clock.
And that's in-person Zoom or YouTube?
All three.
If you do YouTube, you can't.
If you do YouTube, you can't participate because there's no format for that. But if you Zoom, then you can participate, and if you're in person, of course, you can participate.
And Meg, you're gonna take input on everything that you've done so far?
Everything that we've done so far as a group, and all those chapters are available on the website, so you can go and read them and look at it and come up with your comments. Comments from 7 to 9, November 18th. And then Green Options meets on Thursday, so I'll have more then. Otherwise, that's all I got.
Good, okay. Jim?
Yeah, Amber, on behalf of the town, thank you very, very much for, and people don't realize the work that's involved in scheduling these COVID boosters. But this is not in the job description, but Amber has done this year after year. And I, and it satisfies the needs of literally hundreds of people, so thank you very, very much for doing that.
I'm not the, oh yeah, I was 309, and I'm not the only one.
Well, you're the person from here that I see doing that. Who would you like to also credit?
I would, Chief Re, hang on a second, give me a second, because I wrote down the other day, because I did not want to forget people. Keep going, and I'll.
As you, as you, when you go to.
You do it on your report.
On Veterans Day, I would like to thank Sean Clark and Chris Kessler.
Thank you very much for two very enlightening talks. We appreciate it, Sean and Chris did a great job. Like to thank the elementary school children from our school here that wrote literally dozens and dozens of Veterans Day cards to our veterans here on the island. Like to thank Dr. Dojer, like to thank the chorus, the school chorus for showing up, the selected chorus, for doing a nice job with the National Anthem. And Linda Bonacorso, also a special thank you to her and Father Peter for all his, all his work in getting this done. Last night we met as a CAC. Here are the highlights of it. Howard notified Coco this morning. The committee requested that we receive a full-sized hard copies of all plans for our wetlands applications. So I think we discussed that with Coco last night. We're going to try to, you know, take care of that. Because some of these plans are so small, not full-size, they're almost impossible to read.
Is that, is that required in the application now or we have to add that?
Well, we, we reduced the number, I think, at one time. And, and, but it's just not working. You know, people make these site visits too beforehand, so it's, you know, so why can't you just share them at the night of the meeting? Well, we can. But before that meeting, you have to make a site visit. And, and if you have something that's legible and big enough, then when you make the site visit, you can make some notes on that, on that plan. You know, and that's very helpful. We looked at two applications last night. Serpentine Drive basically was put on hold. There's just too many things outstanding, we're waiting for additional plans to be received. But we did take a look at the Cummings, ten Thompson Road, and Mr. Cummings was there. And so was, and so was his architect, I guess. We, we made the following recommendations. We talked about using, replacing the blue stem grasses, the grasses that they had wanted on there with blue stem, which are more native to Shelter Island, and he had no problem with that. There was a controversy about, you know, of course, there's a dock involved here with the steps going down to the dock. They, they wanted to remove the steps in the dock from this application and just send that to the WMAC, which is great. The fact is that the steps do go through the vegetated area, so we convinced them that let's keep the steps in on the plan so that we could actually work on the whole thing and improve that. The only thing that WMAC would be looking at is the dock itself, and he had, there were no problem with that. Those steps were put in the original plan and they'll be added to this new, new version. The hay bales on the neighbor's property will be moved, taken off there. The dry wells, we thought there were a total of two, but there is actually only one. The other one is not, is being used for roof runoff. They wanted to extend the arrow on the plant to the septic tank, which was just something that, that they agreed to do. They are installing a new IA system, which we thank them for. And the vegetation around the post at the stairs was something that they'll put in because that, they're going to disturb that little bit of an area as they put the, the steps in, so they want to put some vegetation around that. But that was the, the intent of that. We did talk, and, and by the way, Stella was on representing Shelter Highland Heights Property Owners Corporation. There, there is still some things that they're missing, if you remember correctly. Stella was on several weeks ago talking about, you know, the, the pieces that need, they're, they're looking for a full engineer analysis, the aquifer, the quantity of water that will be used, the impact on other homes in the Heights area based on the water pressure. So that was another piece that needs to be satisfied with the Heights Association, so that was all tabled. Talked a little bit about the dredging at, at Manantik Creek. There's an attempt, and I see, you know, people that live along Manantik Creek wanted the county to go further up the creek beyond the normal point where they stopped the dredging. So I have something dated here on October thirteenth, Suffolk County DEC, New York State DEC. It talks about Manantik Creek, navigational channel, and I'll read it as follows. Suffolk County proceed, is in the process to maintain a dredge of almost three thousand, two thousand nine hundred ninety-nine, ninety-five feet long, by seventy to a hundred feet wide with navigational channel within Manantik Creek. Existing eight hundred and twenty foot by seventy-five foot inner channel north of Tar, Tar Kettle Road will be dredged to a depth of minus six feet mean low water. And the proposed two thousand one hundred and seventy-five feet of, by one hundred foot of vegetated width on the outer channel south of Tar, Tar Kettle Road will be dredged to a, two feet deeper to minus eight feet mean low water. Approximately, if you add those numbers together, for the amount of cubic yards, it's twenty-five thousand five hundred and fifty cubic yards of material will be dredged during each dredging event. And only dredging material that is compatible with beach nourishment will be placed at Wade's Beach east of Dickerson Creek and at Shell Beach. Material that's not suitable for beach nourishment will be taken to an approved upland location. So that's kind of good news for the people that live along Manantik Creek.
Are they going past the pinch point where South Midway turns and Evans Road comes out? And that's like the narrowest point? Are they going through that narrow point?
I'd have to actually take these dimensions and get on there and actually measure that.
What was the, the measurement?
I'm going to give you the article right now.
Okay, perfect.
All right, we'll give you the, that piece right down, and you can plug that in, and you can actually see firsthand exactly how far north of Manantik Creek that actually goes. We went over the articles, that we're going to start putting some articles in the paper in reference to educational pieces about the mission of the CAC. And I guess that was, that was pretty much it. Oh, we did talk about the storage buildings at Dickerson. So you know, the garden, garden club had been using that first storage area. So when you go down and you take the left in that little asphalt road, there's two sheds. One shed is up closer, closer to the road, the other shed's further in the back. The shed that's further in the back was reconditioned several years ago and updated. Brian has taken, has asked the garden club to take everything out, which they have done. So they have relocated, I don't know where they went to, by the way, but they've taken all their stuff out of there. So that the thing is empty. And we were looking to have it removed. Brian says, no way, he needs storage space. So what they're going to do is they're going to fix up that storage shed, put a new roof on, that'll be done internally. And we're, we're going to store all our mowers in that area, in that shed. So it's going to be put to good use.
Big enough?
It's big enough for the, it is a pretty big inside. So that, that is something that we're looking at. And I guess that was kind of like what we, you know. That was pretty much it.
Good. Thanks, Jim. Amber?
All right, so back to the pod, thank you, I found my notes. The, the people who need to be thanked are the, the different departments within the town, police, senior services, and town hall staff. The organization piece is amazing, done by the police, the senior services get, you know, got people pre-registered and then helped them get signed up. And then town hall staff helped contribute to making things run smoothly. It's all part of the emergency management services team. And so it's actually really good practice for us to do these periodically for recurring event, brings people together. People get tasked, we know who to task, there's muscle memory in making these things happen. So thank you to all of that. The school, they got the space, Nurse Mary got the nurses, the staff got everything set up, so thank you to them. Brook Southampton, if it wasn't for Brook Southampton, we wouldn't have a pod. And they were very flexible in working with us to increase the numbers, which was great, and their professionalism is always beautiful. North at South Bear, we didn't ask, but they pleased all of the staff to come over. So thank you to them for that donation. Dr. Potter was there all day, always dispensing that advice is needed. He came on new to the community during COVID, and you know, he's just really fit in and been a great asset to the town. EMS, the volunteers were there for the entire timeframe. We didn't know if it was necessary, but you never know, there could be an issue. I didn't hear of anything that day, but it was nice having them there and just knowing that extra bit of security. And then lastly, the Senior Citizens Foundation, they underwrote all of the food for the staff that day. So thank you very much to them for doing that. Oh, yeah, we did have volunteers, yes.
Okay. But, and, and we ended up with three hundred and nine vaccines?
Three hundred and nine.
That's great.
Went out, yeah.
Good number.
And then.
Thank you to all those people.
And, and again, just as Amber said, Stony Brook Southampton, they really weren't doing any pods at this point. So they went out of their way to help us.
Yeah. And then they increased it from two forty, they could have taken it up to as high as close to four hundred if we had enough people to give the shots to. But I think with our little mini.
Outbreak?
Yeah, right. People weren't eligible, so we didn't have quite as many as we normally would. But they actually, they, we had a new person as our point person running it, and I think he was pleasantly surprised at like how we pulled this together. Because he was a little hesitant to raise the number above two forty, but once he came over for a pre-meeting and saw that like, this is going to happen this way, and this is this, and we got that covered, and oh, you need nurses, we got volunteers in the community, they immediately raised the number for us. And I think they like coming over here. It's a good environment.
Yeah. Good job. Before, yeah, before we go, well, John's in the audience here, I want to thank him.
I was, I was going to say, I was going to move on to the website.
Yeah.
Yeah, I wanted to say, we had a website meeting this morning. Just, we always, you know, we meet once a month, it's an internal committee just to review the website and see, you know, how, like, what kind of hits we're getting on different pages and things. We always are tweaking the website. One of the things that is going to get updated is our meetings, or actually any of the meetings, committee meetings, so that we can go to click on the calendar for a meeting that's on the, whether it's ZBA. It'll take you to the ZBA page so you can easily find the Zoom link as well as the agenda, because I think people.
That would be great.
Yeah, so and I guess the other thing too is like periodically, you know, wanting to hear from the public. You know, email me, my name's, you know, my email address is on the town website. If there's things that someone, you know, like you're having trouble finding something, like not individual questions, but just ways that we can improve the website design overall and user access. We're always welcome, you know, we always want to hear from that. And, yeah, that's it.
Okay, BJ?
I may be away, but I'm still connected. So shoreline access, we had a follow-up meeting late last week. Various participants, police department, Joe Fenora, sort of forget who else was there. Anyway, so we just, that report was made to the town board last spring, wanted to follow up the, what has been done, what's yet to be done, what probably won't get done for various reasons. So the first follow-up will be the chapters thirty-six, thirty-seven, should be repealed, revised, and reenacted. Bo, Peter, and Peter, Bo Payne, Peter Veilbig, and Stephen Kylie will work on that to, because they, there's thirty-six and thirty-seven contradict each other in places and actually it's hard to make heads or tails of them, I mean, in, standalone even. So that, that's going to be worked on. Daily parking fees brought up, are those earmarked in any way, or do they just go into general fund? Because, you know, beach, if we're going to be rebuilding a groin on, on Crescent Beach, maybe the parking fees should be earmarked for that eventual groin rebuild, just as a, a point of discussion for the town board. Probably during, when I, we're going to look at all the waterway fees sometime over this winter and, and how we account for them. Second causeway and a landing. So a couple of things out there sort of need to be resolved and finalized. But I did look at the tax maps, and we own some, a, a piece of property out there sort of near the, the dock that's privately owned there. Germonte Dock, I think is, is owned by Germonte family. Anyway, a couple of those properties are town properties and they're adjacent, and they're the, again, according to the GIS, they're the widest points on that causeway. Perhaps they could, we could look at them eventually to accommodate a couple of cars to be parked so that it becomes a landing for people who have moorings in that area. That's number one. Number two, maybe if parking is going to be so limited there, right now it's non-existent along that causeway, limited if we get to this project. Well, maybe we need to say to WMAC as a town board, we need to say, there should be no more moorings in that area because if you can't park a car and get to them, very difficult. So that, just so, these are just topics to be discussed among us over the months coming ahead. Also to craft a resolution designating seventy-three shoreline access points, just that they should be officially listed, named and listed. And that list, town clerk's office, you know, will have it, and should be updated with every new acquisition made, usually by CPF funds. But that being said, seventy, the seventy-three that we do currently have should be codified. And so Bo is going to put that on GIS and get a list to Stephen for the resolution. Improve, modernize the ramps as they deteriorate. We don't have many ramps, those that we have, some are in rough shape. That has to be thought of again over the next few years. And the comp plan, finally, suggestion for the comp plan to, in our waterways chapter, to, to suggest a rolling reevaluation of the shoreline access points. Perhaps a WMAC, if each member took ten or fifteen shoreline access points and visited them on a somewhat regular basis and annually there was a, an update, that would be great. The, the town employees have a, have a good handle on this. Oh, Brian was there, I'm sorry, Brian Sherman, he was saying his guys have a good handle on this, but, but this would just be a more formal evaluation of somebody who's there to look at its condition and remembers what it looked like three months ago, when they were there to look at its condition. So, so those, that was the shoreline access meeting. Yesterday was CPF, eight-thirty in the morning, five-thirty my time. And of course, the most interesting part of the CPF always is the executive session, so we won't be talking about that. But I, I did want to make a note, there were questions raised during the CPF meeting about use of funds, CPF slash WQI funds for P, Pecanic Estuary Program dues and PW Grosser TDR study. And, and that was interesting, but I think it's, 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 it took a fair amount of time in that meeting. And that's a, that's a, one of those committees, that's a busy committee, they do a lot of work. So I would just kind of throw out there that in the interest of efficiency, if procedural questions like that could be emailed to us at the town board, to those committees ahead of time, and then liaisons could get them ahead of time, they could be handled almost off the docket, so to speak. Because, okay, so here's the explanation, and here's the, the steps we took as town board to do the, the Pecanic Estuary dues being covered at a WQIP. And here's the relevant statute that allows us to do that. Well, I'm not sure the general public, it's that interesting, if, if, if it can be answered to the satisfaction of the person answering the question, asking the question. That's just a suggestion.
It's a good one.
Yeah, and it, it always strikes me as a little bit of a gotcha moment. I could be wrong, but you know, I gotcha. And we don't really need to do that. Just let's get the answers done, and, and that's what people want, are the answers. That's it.
Yeah, I just wanted to go back and, well, John's in the audience here, I need him. But thank John for the use of the crane. This is the second time this year, you brought the crane down to the recycling center, put the roof on the recycling center. And then yesterday you had the crane down, you had to put up the new flagpole at police headquarters. And we, we couldn't possibly do that without that piece of machinery.
And the operator.
And, and the operator, so I want to thank you very, very, very much for, for being able to do that. I'd like to thank Ken Lewis for coming down to Shell Beach yesterday. We had a lot of ruts by the end of the beach going on, Oak Tree Lane going out there. I asked Brian, could we send somebody down prior to winter before it freezes to smooth that road out? And of course, Ken came down first thing yesterday morning, worked on it for a good portion of the day. If you look at that road, it's really, really in nice shape. So thank you very, very much to both of them for their help. The CAC, we also, we talked about doing a stewardship program for the white property. We're, we're planning a walkthrough as a committee on a Saturday in February to do some of that. We also, the, the boat that's being stored right opposite Dickerson, you know, along the road there, that mystery boat. there, that mystery boat that's just been sitting there for a month after month, I don't find out whose boat that is and where it is, it's right opposite Dickerson Pond, you know, on the, on the west side of the road.
Oh.
You know, it's just kind of been sitting there for an extended period of time, it's kind of like half on private property, half on town property, but it's just sitting there, and it's deteriorating, I just, it's kind of an eyesore, so hopefully, we'd be able to get rid of that. And that was, so I just wanted to thank those people, I never wanted to announce, of course, and I told the people before, but Dan Clark is the proud father of the baby girl, two weeks ago, so, he's not getting a lot of sleep, but that's okay, Dan is actually also developing a brand-new invasive plant list, and will publicize, you know, based on his travels around the island, we're gonna update the invasive plant list, we noticed even on the white property, there are some beginnings of some invasive plants there, so when we do the walkthrough in February, or January, February, we will take a look at that, identify those with Dan, and be able to find a way to, to, to put an end to that real quick. And just that people are asking, questioning why you're commenting on Dan, he's a new member of the CAC. Yes, correct, new member of the CAC, yes, and, and a really an instrumental part of the committee, so, nice job, Dan, and congratulations to him and his wife. Stephen, you have anything?
Yes, I just wanted to update the board and residents on the community housing fund transfer tax referendum, so, since it was such a closed vote, there will be a manual recount, it's a mandatory manual recount, so they're still waiting to make sure that they have all the absentee ballots that are coming in, because military ballots get a little extension on when they have to get back, and then once they have everything organized, they will have that manual recount, which will occur within like one to two weeks, so we should have an answer, like I said, within one to two weeks, as to whether or not the referendum got voted up or down.
Currently, it is down eight votes.
Yes.
Okay.
And I thought there was some absentee ballots uncounted, and some affidavit ballots uncounted as well, maybe to the 270?
No, 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 that was the affidavit factored in, okay.
Not all 113 will come back, so maybe 35 will come back so far.
Okay, and then, does there drop that date?
Yes, there are drop dead dates, and that's what they're all waiting for, and then there were quite a few county-wide affidavit ballots, so they treat them all together, and, you know, so they have this whole timeline, and, you know, so, again, I spoke to one of the commissioners, and she said between once, two weeks is my thing, I have an answer. I, hopefully, I will get the date when they're gonna do the manual recount, so I'll advise the board as I can.
And you'll, you'll witness that?
Yes, I'll attend that.
Anything else?
No.
Bobby, you have anything for us?
No, thanks.
Anybody in the audience have anything?
Yes. Welcome on the crane work, want to acknowledge our rigor Ken Judge, he was the one who attached the crane to the mast with all the ropes and stuff, and make sure it didn't fall.
Yeah.
Very heavy time.
Terrific guy, and, and the other takeaway I have from that, working on the pole and on the cycling center, is that the town, highway, the employees are very impressive, very talented people, and that was a big takeaway from it, great teamwork, great leadership by Ryan Sherman.
Yeah, sometimes we take for granted how much they do.
Yeah, yeah.
Good comment.
Just a quick thing, a little bit in defense of the WMAC, the 25% increase that we suggested, that was a, that meeting was a little bit convoluted, and eventually Jerry said, give me a number, and none of my members spoke up, so I just said, 25%? And I didn't pull it out of the blue, I've been looking at that fund for 25 years, and watching it build up a surplus over those 25 years, and in my mind, the 25% was gonna increase that surplus, I didn't understand that there were other implications of taking money out of the, of the funds to select.
But in fairness, John, if you heard Amber speak, and Jerry speak, we are relooking some of those things that we may, in fact, not be taking out of that fund.
Right, right. But, you know, increasing costs, that is not something that we're gonna be able to pass on, the market doesn't allow it, and the market is what determines our pricing, so, ordinary business want to expand, so I'll be applying for six or eight more moorings. My nephews have asked me about that, and I said, I just told them flat out, no, I think the, towards Cockles Harbor Marina goes, there's a good balance of, you know, our moorings and our service people and our parking and our speed, and all that, it's a, it's a good balance that we can fine tune over the years, and I like it that, but, but we have to do something to offset this cost, because it's just gonna go right to the bottom line, and I can't, you can't have that, and, and again, profit is not a dirty word, if I don't make a profit, I'm not in business, I'm not part of the Shelter Island business community, right? Lastly, I want to say in support of the marinas with moorings on Shelter Island, I think we've been exceptional stewards of the environment, before the, before there was even a no discharge zone, there were three pump-out stations in New York State, two of them were on Shelter Island, because of Cockles Harbor Marina, so that goes back to 1973, Angelo used to do it, it was a hand pump, I used to do it, hand pump, and, and nobody was turned away, that's all I want to say, and I appreciate all of, you guys did listen, and, you know, that was important to, to have that, to get that feeling from you, that you were, you know, really considering the needs, our needs as well.
John, thank you very much for the commitment to us, too.
Thank you.
Okay, I see Lori has a hand up in the Zoom audience.
Hi, everybody, good afternoon, I have a, a question, really just a clarity, as I'm trying to understand the discussion at the beginning of today's meeting with Joe Pecorni regarding West Neck Water, and the question that I have is, is the same question that I asked at a public meeting on April the 1st, regarding the town's purchasing policy and procedures, which the town adopted in regards to bidding on construction and contract projects for the town, so I'm just trying to understand Joe's question, and, you know, if the proposed work is, will be going out to bid, or whether he's gonna use his own people, in regards to the town's policy, which seems to be in line with the general municipal law 103, so could someone explain that to me, and, and if those, if that project's gonna go out, the West Neck Water projects are gonna go out to bid, or it doesn't apply now, because all the other previous town attorneys, several of them, I had to work with over the years, actually, I think it was three, the last three town attorneys, all the West Neck Water projects were required to go out to bid, and the contract that was signed with Suffolk County Water Authority is a management contract, the asset of West Neck Water is still an asset of the town.
Yeah, I'd have to look into that.
I mean, my understanding was, West Neck Water was part of the town's operational expenses, so we had to go out to bid.
Correct.
When we signed the contract with Suffolk County Water Authority, it's all in their hands now.
But they are a municipal entity, so I'm sure they're bound by similar-
My understanding, and, this would be a good question for Joe on Friday at the West Neck Water meeting, and I'm just like going back to my memory a little bit, is that he said that they, they go out to bid, and then the contractors that they choose are like approved based on a bidding process, and then they're in for the whole year, or for whatever time period, so I think that they, they do have a process that's followed, I'm just not 100% sure, but I think because-
That's a good idea, Friday.
Yeah, so, I won't be here Friday, but, Maggie, you said you're gonna be at the West Neck Water?
Yes, I can be at the West Neck Water meeting.
So I, like, let's follow up on that, but my, my understanding was that they, they are subject to something that can, or what would-
Okay, if someone could please get back to me, because I'm just trying to understand the difference of what's happened in the past with the previous town attorneys, and the requirements for the, for, for the bidding process.
Yeah, I would suggest you attend Friday, so you can-
Yeah, I think it's a bit like state contract, like, once you get onto the Suffolk County's list, like, approved list, it's like, then you're pulling off this contract.
I also thought that there was a fixed price on the work that was going to be done in the least, you know, that, and in fact, it had been pointed out over the summer, as the inflation was ticking up, that Suffolk County Water was actually going to absorb those increased prices, based on what they told us this work was gonna cost, did I, do I remember that correctly?
If they had to go with the MWBEs, I thought, if they had to go with, if we, if we got the grants and we had to go with MW, MWBE contractors, I think that we would have had to absorb that extra cost, because they were stepping outside of their approved contractor list, and then I think they would have also had to have, then maybe gone out to bid to find those contractors that fit the bill.
Okay, thank you.
Somebody else? Okay, if there's no other questions, I'm gonna make a motion.
I have a question, Jerry.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I wasn't clear where you left the mooring fees, it was a little confusing there at the end, so.
We're raising the fee, 150 for residential and 250 for commercial, per year.
Commercial, per year, okay, thank you.
And they'll be phased in based upon your renewal date.
Right.
Much to Jerry's advantage.
Julie Lane, you have any questions?
That was exactly my question, it's been answered, thank you.
Okay, okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we adjourn our work session for, and open a special meeting to set a hearing for the moorings, and for a resolution on the old growth forest, so moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so Stephen, you wrote a couple of resolutions here?
Yes, Mr. Supervisor, the first one is just to propose a local law amendment in the moorings chapter, chapter 90, that would reduce the year term of permits to a one-year term.
Okay, so I think rather than read the whole thing, we can read the summary. It resolved that the town board of the town of Shelter Island, it probably directs that a public hearing, that's what we're doing.
It's a public hearing.
Okay, we held on Tuesday, anybody have a calendar?
December 6.
December 6, 2022, okay.
6:19.
6:19 PM.
Thank you.
To hear any and all persons either for or against the local law entitled, the local law amending chapter 90, entitled moorings, to reduce the mooring permit and renewal term from three years to one, and, a local law amending entitled moorings to reduce the mooring from three years to one. Legislative intent, I think it's important, I'm gonna read it, okay, John? Section 1 legislative intent, it explains why the town board is doing what it's doing. The town board finds that a three-year term, a three-year renewal term for a mooring permit is too long, and creates compliance issues and increases administrative costs, a reduction to one-year term allowed for more efficient administration of the mooring code by ensuring consistency in the filing, renewal, termination dates, and further provide an opportunity for annual review to ensure that the permit deed is in full compliance with the mooring regulations, I think that's kind of important, people understand that. And then just the summary that Stephen includes with the legislation, the purpose of this law is to address the practical difficulties in administering the renewal of a three-year mooring permit renewals, while creating an opportunity to force the compliance with the mooring regulations by requiring an annual review of the same, so moved?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the next one is Sarah, thank you, Sarah Gordon was here last week to talk about the old growth program, which is a nationwide program to identify old growth forests, somebody want to read this one?
Sure. I was just thinking, yeah. Whereas the town of Shelter Island is the grantee of a conservation easement over forest land within its, within its boundaries, known as a southwestern corner of Sylvester Manor, further known as plus or minus 16 acres along North Berry Road and Gardener's Creek, and further known as part of Suffolk County tax map 700-08-01-05.01, there's Sylvester Manor, southwestern forest land is situated on the uniquely intact Sylvester Manor plantation remnant, and is the site of some of Shelter Island's oldest, largest trees, whereas the town board is desirous of creating opportunities for residents and visitors to come in contact with natural areas, whereas older forests are home to many species of plants, animals, and fungi, whereas the older forests are best at purifying the air and water, controlling stormwater, and creating fertile soil, whereas most humans consider older forests to be the most beautiful forest, and will travel to see them, whereas the town board finds that ecotourism is economically beneficial for the island, whereas less than 1% of the eastern US forests and less than 5% of the western US forests have remained undisturbed long enough to develop old growth characteristics, now therefore be it resolved that it is hereby determined by the town board that the plus or minus 16 acres of the forest, subject to the 2020 conservation easement, known as Sylvester Manor Forest, shall be perpetually protected and limited to the uses described in the reported easement, shall not be subject to bidding or logging for the purpose of short-term financial gain, and shall be entered into the old growth forest network, so.
Checking, all those in favor?
Aye, I just wanted to say real quick, the goal of this group is to make sure that there's one forest in each county open to the public, never to be logged in, so, in each county in the United States, they wanna, and their goal is like 75%, they would go 100%, but obviously, forest don't, so this would be one county, and the representative of Suffolk County, in this old network, and then just a reminder, on November 27th at noon at Sylvester Manor, they're gonna have the old growth dedication, okay, so, yes, the public is invited, and it's something to be proud of.
I looked up on their website. I looked up on their website, and this is the first one, and only one so far in Suffolk County.
Yes.
That's a Sunday, huh?
Yeah, so you can, you have to continue to walk over your Thanksgiving, walk off your Thanksgiving eatings, on the 27th, they said it's gonna be about a mile tour of the old growth forest.
Nice, did you say 26 or 27?
27.
It's a Sunday now?
Yes.
Okay, and you have the time on that?
Noon.
Okay. So moved, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Amber, okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we close the special meeting and go into executive session to discuss employment history of an employee, potential land acquisition, and also contract negotiations.
I specify the contract negotiations.
Well, the two bargaining-
Yes, with, yeah, you just got-
Highway and police department, yes. Okay, so moved.
Second.
All those in favor?